All right, welcome everyone to the March 25th, 2019 Plington School Committee Meeting. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us here today. Just as to get the disclosure out of the way, this video is being recorded for telecast and YouTube video purposes. It is not an official record. If you want that, you can come get our minutes. All right, so jumping right into it, I have to remember what I'm looking at here. First, we'd like to acknowledge visitors. We have three folks with us. From teachers, we have Ms. Bessinian, did I say that right?
Chinon.
Did I? Yes or no?
Chinon.
Chinon. Thank you. See, that's what, just keep me honest here. And Mrs. Eddy. And then I have Kristi from the Plington Health Hacks Express. Thanks for joining us. We'll try and keep you somewhat entertained. I can't promise we'll do that all the way through. First up, minutes. Do folks have any comments on those?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from our February 25th, 2019 recessional.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then correspondence for the school committee. I did not see anything at the townhouse. Nothing on your end. So, jumping right down to water, I don't really want to talk about water testing.
I guess we have to, it's on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, John. I don't have anything new to report to the committee.
But didn't, but we did get some, we did get some results back, right, between, we talked about it the last meeting. We got some results back that said that this, that there was, the water coming out of the well-
Is clean.
Is clean. Has a little bit of stuff in it, but clean, meets applicable standards, coming out of the well, but for the other stuff in it. And the water on the other end isn't.
Correct.
And so they're focusing on the filter? Or they're trying, or they think that they've got to look at that?
The filter appears to be doing what it's supposed to be doing. It's removing the iron and manganese.
Right.
But the issue at hand is where is the lead coming from?
And is it, whether, isn't there something about the backwash and whether it's sitting in there and something's not fully backwashing? Is it going to take some additional tests?
That's a theory that needs to be explored.
Okay. So I guess that the, part of the reason I wanted to speak to a little bit was just, we are continuing to do work to figure this out.
Correct.
And it's perplexing a lot of people. It should work, and it's not.
Correct.
So-
Can I, if it goes, so you said the backwash, right, so did they mention, if they think it's going through the backwash, is there another valve that's, that stops it from coming in after the backwash? Like a check valve?
I don't know the system that one like-
No, no, I'm just, I didn't know.
I think that, I think that they were, the theory is running on the fact that the filter has done what it's supposed to do, and it's grabbing everything.
Correct.
The manganese, the iron, and the residual amounts of lead. It's not much lead, but it's naturally occurring lead-
Correct.
-in the water itself, because we've replaced the pipes between the well and the, when they did the well over-
Correct.
And the well pipes itself are not lead, and so they think that it's coming in, theoretically, that the water's coming in, it's all being captured. But that when it back washes, it's not perhaps fully backwashing, so it's leaving residual lead in the filter that's then passing out into the pipes.
Correct.
None of it makes that much sense. None of us are water scientists, and even the water scientist-
The scientist, the scientist is trying to say something, I think.
I don't, I don't know if I fully buy that, just because of the molecular size of lead versus manganese and iron. Lead is a huge molecule. It's a big atom by itself. It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense. It's a conundrum, and I know Peter and I talked about this, I know you've been going back and forth with Green Seal and Department of Environmental Protection on this. I'm at a loss. So, any theory at this point, I'm willing to entertain.
So they've done some additional testing at different points, wasn't that, that's what, to try test the different points, and then we're waiting on those results? And they're doing some additional testing, like of-
We'll have testing done again, I believe, next month, just because that'll be the quarterly time.
Yeah.
When I spoke to the water operator, he said, "Don't expect any different results." But, I mean, it's, to everyone's point, our water operator can't figure this out. I've spoken to three different people at DEP that cannot give me a logical reason. Everybody keeps coming back to, "It's going to be the pipes. It's in the pipes, it's in the welding." I said, "The building was constructed after 1986. That's when they had all the issue with lead and solder." And even six months ago, 10 months ago, we weren't getting lead in any testing. So, that's the baffling part.
So, just to backtrack though, from the water treatment plant that we just recently installed and got approval from Department of Environmental Protection on the plans and the installation, we have classrooms closer that aren't showing up lead, but then classrooms further down the track that are showing up lead.
It's actually more random than that. It's very sporadic.
It's sporadic. There's no pattern to where it's showing up.
Nothing.
Have we checked the direct flow after it comes out of the filtration grab before it goes into the pipes, the new pipes of the-
I believe that's a test that Dave did the last time he was here. And he said that was, it was coming up clean.
Clean.
So it has to be in the piping. And I know we had the addition put on after 1986, or whenever the lead-free solder was developed, but maybe we-
Well, it's showing up in the new classrooms. They're done in 2000. I mean, that's not 1988, where someone had some leftover on the truck and they used it. I mean, this is, you know, this is 14 years out. And while not everything perfect was done with the building at that time, that's, wouldn't have that. But, I mean, is there anything about the water now that it's been, I mean, it shouldn't be. It's, it's less corrosive now, because we also adjusted the pH.
And the pH has been adjusted almost every time that Davis, come out, our water operator.
Right. But, I mean, the system now actually does that, whereas the old system didn't adjust the pH.
Correct.
And we added that because we had that one false lead finding back in August of whatever that was. Couple of years. Everything's a couple of years from now.
Yeah.
One year to 10 years, it's a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, we're going to do the next testing, but I guess where are we, where are, where do we have, like, a point that we're going to resolve this? I mean, we're just, are we just waiting for tests? Or, you know, when, when do we have some, I guess, what do we need to do to get to the bottom? Because if we're just going to keep running along here, then I would assume DEP is going to be upset, as are you.
I've heard from DEP on almost a weekly basis, they've been reaching out a lot. The other negative part is I think that our system operator, this is becoming too much work for him. So, I think I'm going to be shopping for a new operator very shortly. And again, to his credit, Dave is very thorough. He knows his stuff. And he says at this point, just because of the nature of the system, the potassium chloride, whatever we're adding in, he said, "It's becoming too much work for him."
And do we have any other feedback from Green Seal, the manufacturer?
No.
I mean, do they, have they, have they had the test results? I mean, have we kept them up to date?
I believe they have everything we, but I can double check on that.
Okay, let's just follow up, because we, you know, and if we need to get someone new on board to do the water, to be the system operator, that's fine. But we still need to start, we need to have some sort of a plan to get to a resolution. And I understand it's difficult with, you know, the stuff comes back and it's, it's more non-conclusive than the last time.
I mean, should we reach, should we reach out to Green Seal and have them come in? And just, just have another pair of eyes to look at something?
Well, they, they were responsive to it. I mean, they installed the system, and something's not working. And it worked, for lead, it worked fine before the system. So, whether they say, "Oh, the system's operating fine," something's happening. Either the street in the water in such a way, it's leaching lead out of phantom places.
Right.
Or the system's doing something that's causing the lead to get in there. I mean, it's, it's a closed system, so there, there's only, there's a finite number of possibilities about what's going on.
Yeah. I mean, I think Green Seal isn't taking any responsibility. They don't believe it's their system.
Uh-huh.
I'm not sure that I-
I get that, but-
I'm not sure if I completely agree with that or not, because we never had a problem until the system was put in. I, I mean, I don't know that, but there's some logic to that sense.
Well, I would, I mean, I would say, Green Seal hasn't been out at this point. They, they need to come out. They, they need to come out and take a look at what's going on. I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean, you can do what we want, but, I mean, they, they did the system. You know, the other guy's having an issue. DEP doesn't know what it is. So it seems like the only person that hasn't been here is Green Seal. Right?
Yeah. I mean, this kind of seems silly, but maybe, maybe we need to, maybe we need to blow this out. Like, like on a map? You know, not a, not a map, but you know, like on a rudimentary map. And all of the points where we've taken measurements and date and what it is.
Yeah.
And let's, you know, and Peter, maybe we can, we can find some time to do that or whatever. But I, I just think we need to, we need to be able to see this visually about what is going on and what we have, in order to then try and figure out what, because I, otherwise, I think you have a bunch of test results, which all don't have good stuff on them.
No.
Either it's all clean when it shouldn't be, or it's dirty where it shouldn't be. So let's, maybe we should do that, take that offline, and get that done, search for a new water operator, and then we have to come up with a plan to, to deal with it, because it's, there's too much pretty copper pipe in that room to not work right.
It's very pretty copper.
Okay. So yeah, I told you I didn't want to talk about-
I, I was not going to disagree with you on that.
Okay. Playground.
So I have good news for you.
Thank you.
Changed gears.
Thank you.
So-
You can stay.
Yeah, Billy.
As you all know, we've been working on the playground project here for Dennett's since May 2015. Been doing some research by going offsite, checking out what some other schools have, talking to contractors and vendors. What we really are looking for is bringing a playground to, to our school that will be accessible to all the students. It will be safe for all of the students, and it will be developmentally appropriate for all of the students. So, that's quite a challenge, since we're a K-6 school, but we feel we've found some design solutions to meet this need. And the, the total price tag of this project was about $228,000. We've been able to maintain some of the money from school choice funds, $132,000, since Brian Wick was our chair and decided that we weren't going to wrap that school choice money into our operating budget. It's been accumulating for use for students for one time needs like this. So, we approached the Community Preservation Committee with the plans for the playground and with the financial stewardship we've had with that school choice money, and asked them to support the project as well. And at their last meeting, they unanimously voted to support an article at town meeting for $94,000 for the playground project. Now, I just mentioned, we started this in 2015. We're at the goal line, but we're not over the line yet. We still need people to come to town meeting to vote the article through, to, to secure the $94,000. But I made a presentation at CASA, and Sarah Prairieo put it up on Friends of Dennett's webpage, and we actually got solicitations of, of help and goodwill. Peter and I recently had a meeting with a gentleman who is a former project manager, who actually worked with the vendors putting in playgrounds, and he's offered his, his time and his expertise pro bono.
Oh, nice.
He's even offered to, to help us make the design for the playground even more inclusive than our original prototype was. We're adding a little bit more freestanding play and ground elements. We're looking at potentially putting a ramp onto a section or a play structure, and maybe modifying some of the swings. So not only is there a five-point harness swing, but there's also one that could be a platform that a wheelchair could secure straight into. In addition, we've been approached by individuals who stated that if the money at town meeting is passed, if that article is passed, that they would be willing to then jump on board and donate additional equipment to the playground. So, at town meeting, we're not really fighting for an article for $94,000. We're fighting for an article for $94,000 and potentially even more for our kids here at the Dennett. So, people are stepping up and getting excited. So I would encourage everybody to come to town meeting on May 15th at 7:00, just to steward the town, but also to support the playground project as well. Sarah Prairieo has invited me back to the CASA meeting on April 9th, which is a Tuesday, to give the presentation again. And she's going to be advertising that, so a few more people can come in. And I'll also be here at the talent show rehearsals and the night of the talent show with some informational flyers to hand out and answer questions for the public as they come in.
That's great. Excellent news.
Yeah. And I, and I think Jason's emphasized that I'm going to beat that course a little more, and that, you know, coming to town meeting is what's going to get that through. If we don't, we don't get the positive vote for the $94,000, the playground doesn't get built. And there's been a lot of work put into it. It is needed. It is a very needed asset for, for the school, for many, many reasons. First of all, just for the kids and for their developmental needs, but it also is liability issues for the town, if we don't have that. And I think it's also, you know, it's, it shows investment in the community. But the town does not have unlimited amounts of funds, and even for, even in the community preservation, they've spent a lot of money in that space. And so, it is important that we get the folks and get the votes there in order to, to show that support. So, it's May 15th. Okay. Power lines.
Power lines. Comcast has done what they need to do. Every source, again, is assuring us that we are on the middle list of things to get accomplished. I spoke to them again today.
I'm going to leave that one alone. Okay. Standing committee reports, administrative review.
Yes. Superintendent's evaluation due tomorrow. We still have time.
Yep.
I don't know what the count is.
Five and 24.
Still the same, so.
Well, I have, I know, I noted my homework for tonight, so you will have six of 24 by-
You're not alone.
Tomorrow morning.
I think Jason may have sent another reminder, I'm not sure.
She did.
Okay.
Apparently not. Apparently I'm not the only one doing homework tonight.
Everybody's working on it. So, that's all included.
All right. Negotiations, we've been no meetings, Union 31. So we have a-
April 11th.
Next meeting April 11th, 5:30.
For, for the evaluation, we do, for the full committee. So, we voted on and then presented at the civil aid.
But it's presented at 5:30 for the joint meeting?
Well, 5:30 in the week, I'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Pack.
Our last meeting was canceled due to lack of a quorum.
Sorry. Not much to report, then.
I, I was going to go. It was canceled, so nothing to report.
Okay. Policy meeting, we have one in an hour. So, more to come on that. It's good to see that there are less than 10 policies to review, so I appreciate it.
Nice, easy, quick.
Less than 10, that's good. Capital improvement, I don't think we have anything else. We haven't already spoken to legislative?
So there was a hearing that the state hosts last Friday that was publicized widely. A lot of people showed up to speak for Senator Chang Diaz's Ed You Promise Act, which has been dubbed by some as the Boston Della. There's definitely a gap in funding for urban centers in Massachusetts. And there's a direct correlation between that funding gap and performance for those students. I think what we're going to end up seeing come out of Beacon Hill is something that's a little bit more holistic, looking at our suburban communities, our urban centers, and our rural towns as well. Working with Rep. Josh Cutler, we were actually drafting a letter recently asking for the per pupil minimum increment to be raised from the $20 proposed by the governor's budget to $100. That would make a difference for our budget of about $16,000 more state aid for Plington. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, potentially, but that's about half a percent of our budget. So, any amount of money helps. So I appreciate Rep. Cutler working with me on that. I know he's not one of our reps, but he was kind enough to allow me to help him with that. Rep. LaNatra did sign his bill in support, and so did Senator Brady. So we did have our local legislators signing on to that $100 per pupil increment. Hearing some good things out of the State House about circuit breaker potentially for next year as well, which could give us some relief. Went to a conference at UMass Anheuser's last Tuesday with the Commissioner of Education. And a lot of the things he's hoping to see is actually already occurring here at Dennett. Some interdisciplinary lessons, a lot of project-based play and learning. So, we're already on the cutting edge there. So, I walked out of that meeting feeling pretty proud of representing Plington with the Dennett. So, the next major meeting is probably on May 1st. Up at the State House is Day on the Hill. MASC is hosting that. And if you'd like to join me up there, I'd be more than happy to have you come in.
And has there been much reaction from the State House with respect to the governor's budget with respect to education? It seems to move things around.
Everyone at the State House pretty much knows that the governor lowballs education in his budget. And they don't really pay much attention to what he says about education. The Senate and, and the House come together in conference committee, and that's where our real budget comes out of. There's some pretty prominent people who've already indicated it's, it's going to be, it's not going to meet the Foundation Budget Review Commission's goals 100%. And those were from 2015. But it's going to be moving in the right direction, much like last year. Last year, we did really well with the State House. Education got a little bit more of a nod than it had in several years, and it seems like we're still down that pathway. Problem is, we're $220 million in the red right now for the state budget. We're falling behind the projections. One of the things they thought they were going to get revenue out of was the marijuana sales in the state. They were expecting $5 million a month in taxes for marijuana. They've only made $5 million in taxes in total since recreational marijuana has come on the books.
And that's because of the delay, right? I mean, isn't that a lot of it, because they-
Absolutely.
Was it six to nine months delayed and-
But that was projected into the numbers. We also had two dismal months where people were playing maybe with some of their investments for capital gains reasons, and that affected the state's income. So, even though it's looking great right now, there is in the back of all the legislators' minds that-
How do you pay for it?
$220,000, $220 million deficit. And how do we pay for-
Wow.
The $1.1 billion that we all know that education actually needs to, to meet its threshold of cherishing education in Massachusetts. That's in the Constitution of our Commonwealth.
So they're just need to find $1.4 billion?
Pretty much.
Seems easy enough.
So, if I, if I can get them to, to help us with circuit breaker, and I can, I can get this $100 per pupil minimum increment, and a few other pieces of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, I know they're looking at readdressing how ELL students are allocated. Right now, across the state K-12, if you're an English language learner student, you get the same amount of money. But we're realizing, this is common sense. Children who are younger pick up new languages easier. So we're actually having more difficulty with our junior high and high school students. So we're going to allocate more money to those students in the foundation budget. And if you take the access test, which shows that you're now proficient in English, you don't get any ELL money for that student anymore. So, we were spending money on kids who had shown proficiency, so we're going to maybe erase that now and give more to the older kids to get them more intensive help to learn the English language. There are some dynamics going on. Didn't want to drill down too deep.
There always are.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And there were no single signature warrants, I don't believe.
Correct.
Have to check, though.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily know what I was doing. That's not a good thing. Anyways, from a CASA perspective, I think the update that we have there is from your discussion regarding the playground. That puts us on to Mr. Pedino.
Great, thank you. As indicated in my principal's report from March 2019, our current enrollment is 201 students. We have a lot of important dates coming up. This Wednesday, March 27th, is our Grade Six Honors Breakfast. If I heard the numbers correctly, I believe we had close to 80% of this, that group that was going to be attending that. So, Grade Six is really doing a nice job with their grades. March 28th, we have another talent show practice here. Friday night is the Grade Six Teachers vs. Students basketball game. In years past, that had been held at the middle school, but they're having it here at Dennett this year. April 2nd, we have our Dare graduation at 1:15. April 4th is another, the dress rehearsal for the talent show. The big talent show itself will be April 5th at 6:00. On April 8th, we will be doing spring pictures. We're getting into field trip season here. April 9th, kindergarten will be going to the New England Aquarium. Our spring vacation this year is from April 15th to 19th. Then we're back here on April 22nd for school committee at 5:00.
Excellent. Kindergarten enrollment, is that still, is kindergarten enrollment still around 40?
Kindergarten enrollment for next year looks like 41.
41. Nice.
It's climbing.
That's excellent. That's great news. Thank you.
What? Is that the question you have?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure I was correct in assuming that our school population will increase by 10% next year.
It's kind of astounding, isn't it?
Yeah. And for, for those just tuning in, the issue is, is we have, because of a number of students that left last year from then, Grade Five, Grade Six is very small this year, with only 20 students. So you have a small class going out and a very big class coming in, which will change the dynamics. And bless Mrs. Resmey.
Mrs. Chinon.
Wow. Oh my God. That is not my place.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate, though. When the governor cut in the middle of the year the funding for our kindergarten aids several years ago, we made the commitment to fund them from our own budget, and we've kept those aids in our budget ever since. And it's because of reasons like this that that was such an important decision with the committee.
Absolutely. Yep. 41. And that's, that's likely to go up.
We seem to have an awful lot of families that are having younger siblings come through. So some of our older families that have gone out to middle school, high school, their, their places are being taken nicely. So, it's nice to see.
You're diplomatic.
Yeah, it's good.
Great.
Thank you.
And if I may just one more question. Peter, am I correct that none of our current school choice students have younger siblings that are into that class?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
As far as I know, yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay. So I'm to be sure.
Okay, financial report. Christine.
Thank you. In your package tonight, you'll, in your computers, you'll find a copy of the financial for tonight. The financial is still holding up pretty well through this point through March, this point in time. We're three quarters of the way through the year, and we're getting through nicely. There are a couple of items with small deficits. There are literally two accounts with small, with deficits. Telephone and special education. Both of those will be absorbed within the categories. Within special education, contracted services and transportation, both will have surpluses for the year end. The tuition account on your financial, you see a deficit. That is before the impact of circuit breaker, and there will be sufficient circuit breaker to reduce that to zero.
Okay.
That's pretty much it. I just wanted to mention, we still have a surplus in other district vocational, that's continuing.
That's, that's good.
That is good, yes.
Because we're looking to spend some of it.
No, actually, for tonight, I was actually looking at the budget and seeing where we're going to be for next year. And we have four of the five slots spoken for now, so we're moving forward for next year.
Okay, so for, so for the vote climb, we're already at four or five?
We already have four. We have two students that are returning, two new students, and they, we still have to lay first. So there's still one spot left.
Good prognosticating with the number of slots.
It's a little bit of a gamble when you have that many seats opening up, and, yeah.
You just don't know.
You just don't know.
No. This year has been a lot less activity than we've seen in previous years. That's it, thank you. If there are any questions?
Thank you. No, we present that, it's kind of hard to have questions. Everything's good.
Yep. We look good.
Okay. Jill?
So, in your curriculum instruction and assessment update, you will see that the state has, will be providing us with benchmarks for our English language learners. And the goal for these benchmarks is for students to attain proficiency within six years. That is the goal. What is new- What is new, the idea of having benchmarks for certain groups of students and for students in general, is not a new concept with the state in terms of our accountability system. What is new is the procedure that our district must adopt in order to make sure that we're examining that data and providing plans to help our English language learners attain proficiency within six years. So, it's very similar to the old educational proficiency plans that we had years ago when MCAS first came out. Very similar to that, and all of the principals and the... our English language learned teachers and our support teams will be looking at that data and making sure that we are providing the necessary information and working with parents to support those students. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in February, the 2018 report cards were distributed electronically to families. These report cards were not printer-friendly, so in the past, we provided people with hard copies. The state is working on a printer-friendly version, and it hopes to be out in the spring. But that is available on our websites. And so if you have not seen it, please be sure to take a look at it. There are little links that you push on that give you more interactive data. When you first look at it, it's, you feel like, well, there's not really much here, but it is interactive, and that's where you find the actual data on it. So that's new. And then, I am so excited that the kindergarten classes invited me to speak for Read Across America Day. I had a great time, they were wonderful students, and I received a beautiful thank you letter that was signed by all the students in very colorful penmanship, and I loved it, so thank you. It was a great time. And survey results from our last Professional Development Day have been shared with the Professional Development Council, and we will be reviewing those to help inform our next... our plans for the upcoming school year and professional development to come. Any questions?
No. Coincidence that the ELL came up in your report and my report?
We're on it.
That brings us to the funds, though.
Excellent, thank you. So, at the last month's School Committee meeting, we reduced the Denit budget by $10,000. And that was voted at that time. So you have in your packet the version two of the budget, which has reduced $10,000 from our original version one budget. That $10,000 came from increasing Circuit Breaker from 60% to 65%, which was a decrease in the budget of $5,492. We decreased the textbook cost for the math adoption. All the teachers worked throughout the school year testing the different programs, and the program that they decided on was the Pearson Math Program. Were you part of it, Megan?
No, I couldn't remember who was on it.
And they were able to reduce some of the costs by negotiating with Pearson. So that reduced another $4,027. Christine also has been reviewing utilities, and she feels confident we could reduce gas by $1,000. That allowed us to reduce the overall budget by $10,519. So you can see on the bottom what those changes are. Overall, in terms of the budget. I don't know, does anybody have any questions about that? It was sort of a quick meeting, I think we were in the cafeteria, if I remember correctly, without power. It was kinda fun. The generator worked great, by the way, it was pretty impressive. So that was really good.
I'm like, oh, you don't have to reschedule the meeting.
No, it was awesome. We had no power, but the generator worked, so it was very, very helpful.
Tell me, they mishandled that excitement?
I know, I know.
Yeah, so just a second. So, generator's doing what it's supposed to do?
It did.
We have that part of the school is running and...
It was amazing, John, I was, we didn't have power in the building, and we had light heat, and I was online because of the different things that are on the new switch. So it was really quite impressive.
Yeah, it was great. Yeah, I mean, we hadn't planned on having a test that way, but it worked out.
Sometimes those are the better tests.
Yeah, it was, it was great.
Good.
It was great. So that's where we are with the budget. The other thing we did is we presented to the Finance Committee. We have not, to my knowledge, received any feedback that I'm aware of. I don't know if anyone else has received any, but I have not. I've reached out several times, and I've not received any feedback on the budgets.
No news is good news.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, we also, as part of the discussion we had with FinCom, not only we talked to the budget, but we talked to the fact that the money is coming back from... we're expecting a certain amount of money to come back from the vocational line. And with that, we have some capital items, smaller capital items to deal with. Less than what we thought earlier in the planning process. But we certainly have some issues with the roof, which we're looking to put about $10,000 towards.
Yes.
And then we also have the stabilization fund that we started last year. And that is a fund that allows us to put aside 2%? 2% of our base budget, right? It's the total operating budget.
Christine, what words did you use at our last meeting? Because if I said of our operational budget, you corrected me, and I wrote it down.
Yes, she printed it up.
She had it here?
Better verbiage for us.
Net school spending.
Net school spending. So, 2% isn't much, but what this allows us to deal with, particularly in the special ed space, is if we were to have a student move in or students' needs change mid-year, we would be able to, working with the Board of Selectmen, be able to access these funds in order to offset on the budget, so we don't walk into town meeting as, either in the negative or as much in the negative. And so last year, we established this with the thanks to town meeting and support of the Selectmen and FinCom. And we put aside $40,000. We dropped in there, just a nice round number, and we took that out of some special education funds, I believe. We were special education and vocational funds that were coming back to the town.
It was a combination.
Combination.
You had agreed that it worked out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had money coming back from both. This year, we have it from both, but probably not from special ed. So, we didn't get all of our 2% in, plus our budget increased a little bit again this year. So we're gonna look to put another seven...
$7,040.
Seven thousand and change into that again this year to try and keep us up at that full 2%. Maybe at some point in the state's great wisdom, they will raise that a little bit so that it could be a proper amount, but we'll take what we can get. And just like kindergarten aids and other things that we plan on, we're putting them in place in order to deal with it when the stuff comes. Not if, when.
I will just recall from our meeting with the Finance Committee when we mentioned putting the maximum amount in that fund, that they were pretty happy to hear that. I do remember that distinctly, that they were pleased we were gonna continue to keep that maxed out, especially since our total will be around $47,000.
$47,000.
And our cheapest out-of-district placement as of right now is the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. And we're lucky that we have a great partnership with them, and we can keep the costs reasonable. But $54,000 a year, again, is our cheapest out-of-district placement available to us. So this wouldn't even cover a full year of that. Mid-year, absolutely, a move-in, absolutely. But it's extremely important for us to have this safeguard, absolutely.
It just helps, it helps the school, but it also helps the town.
Absolutely.
Because in the end, we have to provide these services, and we're on the hook by the time we go to town meeting to find the money, so. And then, we had a couple of other items, including a copier to replace the ancient one.
Correct.
That's here, and a floor cleaner that is equally as ancient, if not older. And perhaps is using spare parts from the copier to try and keep it running.
We might be at this point.
So, I think we had talked to them about all of those items. Looking, again, at the budget, I think we're gonna ask for the funds to be transferred for the copier, and we're gonna look to absorb the floor cleaner within our existing budget to try and be as prudent as we can with the funds that we have here, and understanding that there's money needed everywhere. So hopefully that gets us, and we'll put those, we'll show up, those three articles for stabilization, the roof, and the copier would show up in the special town meeting. And we'll help keep moving the school in the right direction and funding the things that we need to. And it's not to say that either the copier or the floor cleaner, or the roof, I guess, didn't need attention earlier, but it's now when we think we can do it and get that sorted. So, I will take care of those.
Are you gonna take care of this?
I'm gonna take care of these. I did actually speak, I spoke with the town administrator today.
Okay.
And the special town meeting warrant will close in a week or two, but we're gonna get those taken care of this week. And given that they're all different items, I'm gonna do three separate articles, if that makes sense to folks. If we were gonna do a couple of capital improvement ones, like the floor cleaner and the copier, that might make sense to put them together. But they all have sort of very distinct purposes, and I think to blend them would... I think it's better to have separate discussions. All right. Okay, so, that's the background, but I think we need to do some voting, right?
We do.
I just want to, again, reiterate for the record that next year, we're gonna have 10% more students than we currently have this year. The budget comes in at a 3.49% increase over last year's spending, which is pretty much in line with some of the inflationary pressures we felt throughout the state in the past year. I'd like to commend Peter, again, and his staff on putting together a budget that only had two areas of increase overall, and that was the area of special ed, which we are legally bound to provide students with the least restrictive environment to meet their needs as individual learners. And also, on our teacher line, again, we benefited from having retirements of teachers in the past, and we have some younger teachers right now who are continuing to pursue their education and get advanced degrees so they can provide even higher quality education for our students here at Plinthen. So, without reservation, I would like to make a motion that the Plinthen School Committee approve the 2019-2020 Elementary School Operating Budget of $2,449,747 as the amount deemed necessary for the operation of the regular day.
Hold a second.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that the Plinthen School Committee approve the 2019-2020 Elementary School Special Education Budget of $1,077,672.
Hold on a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that the Plinthen School Committee approve the 2019-2020 Elementary School Out-of-District Vocational Education Budget of $120,000.
Hold on a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you so much. And again, I want to commend Peter. I was gonna say, and this is just compensable, but... No worries. You know, and Christine for doing a fantastic job putting this together. You know, we're at our office where budget season is sort of a special time for us all, and it's always nice that we're all still talking to each other and friends.
Only got five of them, right?
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of them, so it's all good. So the only other thing that I had, and I wish I'd set the policy meeting for 6 o'clock, I am really kicking myself here, is the green energy, Green Communities Grant application. So we received an email from the town administrator, and the town of Plinthen was submitting another Green Communities Grant application. And I'm not 100% sure how these items were picked. Are you, Peter?
No.
Okay. So, neither, none of us...
Do we have these things?
Most.
So we weren't, these were sort of selected, and I'm not 100% sure the process. We certainly always appreciate the town including us in any grant applications. So I just wanted to let you know that this was something that the town was pursuing.
These look like these are from an energy source report.
I believe they were, yeah. I think they were from the audit is where these came from. So, I just wanted to make you aware of this. This just came as an email, just sort of confirming.
Does this make sense to you, Peter?
I have a question. Is there any financial obligation on behalf of the school to meet any of these?
It says, there's a big blank line that says town contribution. So my assumption is that there isn't, we should probably validate that. Just as a, yes, this sounds great, as provided there is no impact to the Denit school, the Plinthen School budget.
Yeah.
I was just gonna mention that from what I've seen other reports of this with other towns, it looks like they believe their grant is covering $237,000, and the balance will be coming from the utility incentives.
Right. But I think we want, I think we want to, I think to Jason's point, it makes sense just in replying that this sounds great, but that our assumption and our bias to this is based on the fact that the school is not... we're not looking to take anything out of the school budget to fund any deficits in these spaces.
Which is fair, because we did have a bad experience in Halifax with...
We did.
Not that we would here, but just so that, I mean, I have no problem if they want to put in new condensing boilers or whatever they're doing here, or whatever those are. That's great, as provided that we don't get to February or March of next year and say, oh, the school needs to put in 10 grand to help it. Because, you know, we run a very tight budget, as we see.
Yep.
And there's enough, there's enough stuff that goes off on its own without adding to it.
Right.
Joe, the only concern that I voiced to the town hall was the timing of some of these projects.
Yep.
We have a real narrow window, and it looks like we're probably gonna be hosting a good portion of the summer programming district-wide here at Denit again. So I wanted to, just wondered out there that this all looks great, but you need to let me know when we're looking to do these things.
Let's add both of those to the list.
And to double down on what Peter just said, God willing, we'll be ripping all this stuff up and putting in a new playground this summer as well.
It's gonna be busy. Halifax will be completing their sprinkler system. Well, that's a belief or hope. So Halifax will not be available at all. So Halifax will be moving down here as we did last year.
Now they're never gonna leave.
Yeah, I know, because you have AC. They don't have AC. Yeah, they're all getting really happy with Denit. Yeah, Pete's changing the lock.
Out-of-town service fee?
Yeah.
All right. So I think both of those caveats are necessary, and I mean, some of it, maybe they would even do over the Christmas break or other breaks, you know, depending on it. It seems, my guess is if they're putting, because when did they come to us to want to do the additional lights that were already done?
We initially had a conversation in, we started back in August.
Okay, so most likely, this will come after the summer, by the time they get the grant, and then... But we should, we should put that down, that we have limited availability this summer, and then, of course, it has to be done in and around school occupancy.
Sure.
Who do you mean, transformers?
King Shiloh.
Always is. Lots of copper.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from the Board or the Administration?
I believe I am all set, thank you.
Okay. Let them get everyone out of here.
You have to stay, sorry.
I know, but it's this meeting. One thing at a time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second? All right, thanks very much, have a good evening.